My name is Dan Carney and it is, once again, my distinct privilege to be able to serve as chairman of this meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. The deliberations with us here today are also of Vice Chairman Doug Dowd, Secretary Leela Morris, Ms. Mary Beth Denny, Mr. G. B. Bailey, and Dr. Robert Marlet will also be participating in the meeting. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College on Thursday, March the 13th, 2025, at 12:30 PM in the Community Room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building, 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider and act upon a post-agenda. I do call this meeting an order. Mr. Baker, would you provide us with an indication?
Be happy to. Thank you, sir. Please bow with me. Lord, we're thankful to you for this time of year, for the beautiful weather you've brought to us, for the break that a lot of us will get next week, for our students and our faculty and staff. Thank you for our board. Please be with them as they deliberate today, and thank you for their dedication and for all of our students, faculty, and staff. We thank you for them. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Lord. I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you're able to, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here at item two of the post-agenda for public comment, this is worthy. Has anyone signed up to speak today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Item number three is the President's Report. Dr. Todd Allen Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations: Weatherford College recently received notification from the Texas Board of Nursing that our 2024 vocational nurse rate on the licensure examination was an amazing 100% pass rate. Absolute excellent performance. We have with us today our Program Director Lori Boyd, who's working on her doctorate, and one of her colleagues. Would you all please stand so that we can give you yet another round of applause? We're so proud of you and all of our allied health programs. Wonderful work. To say that our WC athletic teams are doing well this year would be a gross understatement. Women's tennis is ranked number seven in the nation. Men's tennis is ranked number nine in the nation. Men's golf is ranked number 10 in the nation. Women's golf is ranked number 12 in the nation. Softball is ranked number 16 in the nation. Baseball is ranked number one in the nation for the third consecutive week, and both the men and women are currently competing in the regional basketball tournament in Waco. A special recognition goes out to Antoine Wilson, who last night at the buzzer nailed a 30-foot three-pointer to give the Coyotes victory and allow them to advance to the semifinals. Weatherford College recently honored 49 of the finest teachers from across the region in the annual Jack Harvey Academy of Exemplary Teachers Celebration on Thursday, February 27th, in the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building. The event was coordinated by the faculty, staff, and students of our WC teacher education program. We'll be hearing from them here in just a few minutes. Congratulations to Dr. Itoyaga and on a Texas Workforce Commission grant being funded in the amount of $1.1 million. The grant will provide much-needed childcare funding for many WC students. Employee notices: DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Jimmy Walker, our manager of student housing, has resigned effective 5/30/25, and Dr. Peter Windigan from Information Technology has resigned effective 2/7/25. We thank Jimmy and Peter for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chair, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you very much. Item number four is our consent agenda and financial reports as is posted there, items A through E. Is there any member of the board that has a question or comment about that before I call for a motion to approve? Do you have any observations or comments about it? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as has been posted? Call in favor, please. Appears to be unanimous. Item number five is consideration of possible action on the adoption of the 2025-26 tuition and fees and the Canyon West Golf Course rate changes. And Dr. Cantrell, I think you're going to give that, or you not?
Thank you, yes. This is something that the whole college has been working for, all the academic areas and also the auxiliary areas, been working over the last two or three months. The governor helped us back in the fall when he said there'd be no tuition and fee increases. So in complying with that, there are no recommendations at this time for tuition and fee increases. We do, however, have for you the Canyon West auxiliary income rate increase recommendations that will go into effect April the 7th. And this is in line with their plans for the coming year and the expenses associated with that. And also immediately, they are anticipating increases in the membership fee as recommended in this, the sheet that was sent out to you all. Are there any questions?
I guess Touchstone had a big input.
Yes, Touchstone did have recommended these to us, the management company.
Has the situation with Touchstone been working out as far as the administration's concerned?
I'm actually, Dr. Tarnabinski is not, I'm not over on a day-to-day basis with Touchstone, but from everything, they're coming along as they were budgeted. I think they did have a shortfall budgeted for this first year to do some improvements and things like that, so it's worked at that point. Dr. Farmer, I'm not really versed in the...
Yeah, I can add to that. And Dr. Tees absent. Jacey, if you have anything to add, feel free to comment as well. We were running deficit in the winter months. The April months, I'm told, are booked solid. Touchstone is in the process of being bought out by another company. Jacey, do you remember the name of that other company?
Kimber Sports.
Who?
Kimber Sports.
Kimber Sports, which they were one of the groups that originally placed a bid, were they not?
Yes.
Yes. And so the owner, Doug Harker, has been in contact with us and has notified us that that buyout is in process, but Touchstone will still operate as a subsidiary of that larger umbrella corporation. We have had very positive reviews from Canyon West community. Matter of fact, yesterday at a Chamber luncheon, I heard some very positive comments about some people that were going to join out at Canyon West that live out there. And they were very pleased with the condition of the course, with the exception of the greens, which we're still fighting some of the poana on the greens and treating that, but it's improving. As was anticipated, that it would take a couple of years to get rid of that poana. But generally speaking, moving in the right direction with the change of oversight with Touchstone.
I'd like to hear those comments. Appreciate it.
What's the average membership fee?
Jacey, can you help me with that? Average membership fees?
$2,600 is the annual current individual fee, and they're recommending it go to $3,200 a year.
So what manner of motion would we need with regard to Agenda Item Number Five?
Just a recommendation to approve the tuition and fee schedule for academic courses as presented, and then the Canyon, approve the changes to Canyon West Golf Course rates to become effective as of April 7th, and approve the changes to Canyon West Golf Course annual membership fee to become immediately.
Mr. Dowd, do I have such a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you very much. Item number six is consideration of possible action on accepting certification of unopposed candidates and canceling the May 3rd, 2025 Board of Trustees election. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, after the deadline to file for the Board of Trustees passed on February the 14th, both places that were up for this year's election were unopposed. Ms. Denny filed for place number one. Tom Vick filed for place number two. Judy McAnally did not file for reelection, and so we may now cancel the election. So we ask that you accept the certification of unopposed candidates and then order the cancellation of the May 3rd election.
Do I have such a motion in that regard? And a second in that regard?
A second.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. Appears to be unanimous. So approved. We are down to item number seven on the reports, and this falls to Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've been provided the normal WCWC Academics and Student Services update in writing in your packets. And Agenda Item 7B, I'm very proud to report to you that the Community College Baccalaureate Association, which is a national organization that supports bachelor's degrees at the community college level, held their annual conference in the great state of Texas for the first time in Austin last month. And Dr. Hancock and a team went down for that presentation, and they award three scholarships annually to students across the nation. And the very first student to ever win a scholarship from the great state of Texas was our very own Mary from Weatherford College, who's here with us today. And so, Mary, we're very proud of you, very proud of Dr. Hancock and Shannon Stoker and everyone associated with our vibrant, growing teacher education program. So with that intro, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. White.
Thank you so much. Board Chair Dan Carney, esteemed Board of Trustee members, and President Farmer, it is my distinct honor to introduce Dr. Leslie Hancock, our Program Director over the Bachelor's in Early Childhood Education and Teaching. And she'll provide a program update for you today as well. And also, you'll hear from Mary Tagle, one of our outstanding students that you just heard about, and one of our future teachers. So thank you all for your time. Dr. Hancock? All right. Board members, thank you so much for having me. President Farmer, thank you so much for welcoming me. All of our extended administrators, faculty, and staff, I'm delighted to see you today. My name is Dr. Leslie Hancock, and I am the Director of the Bachelor's Program in Education here at Weatherford College. I want to take this opportunity, before I introduce Mary, to talk to you a little bit about our program. We have been working for almost two years to bring this dream of Dr. Farmer's and Stoker's to fruition, and I want to show you what we have done with the time and the resources. So first things first, I want to talk about our mission, our vision, and our goals. Education has been in our blood as a nation from its very inception. Thomas Jefferson included a provision for public education in his bill for more general diffusion of knowledge. In this bill, you didn't know you were getting a history lesson, and then we're going to have an art lesson, because I cannot teach. So at any rate, in this bill, what he did is he provided for individuals with aptitude who are willing to put forth effort over an extended period of time to engage in education as a means to elevate their status, their family's economic means, and by extension, then their community, and to preserve democratic freedoms. From there, the Common School Movement was unified around the idea of creating a common school for each individual community that is locally controlled, but also focused on values and focused on a common American national identity, okay? And this was an effort to ensure that we have some overarching values and system that we communicate to our citizens, that then they can use in order to engage frugally within our society, but also that we allow for community standards, in the terms of things like the Board of Trustees, to govern at the local level. So it's with these two things in mind that this is drawn as our mission. We want to prepare knowledgeable, dedicated educators ready to serve in Texas schools, committed to helping children become proud Americans, responsible and informed citizens who honor and uphold the values of our state and our country. This is our goal, this is our focus, and we are single-mindedly pursuing it. So what does our curriculum look like? Here's your art history lesson, okay? This is a school of Athens. It was painted as a fresco in the Apostolic Palace in the Vatican. And if you see, it's a whole bunch of philosophers engaged in philosophizing. I don't think that's a word, but my husband got a philosophy degree, and he's not here, so he can't correct me. Anybody else a philosopher major? No? Okay. So what I love about this is it reminds me in many ways of what we do at a college and a university. We have experts, big thinkers and big doers come and convene, and we teach, we engage in the dialogic and the dialectic. And so to me, this is, aside from the fellow who's resting on the steps, it seems to be the work of educators. But the thing that I love most about this is what's in the very center. These two gentlemen right here, okay? So two big names in philosophy, we have Plato and we have Aristotle. Plato is focused on contemplating the ideas of true, perfect justice, freedom, fidelity, love, democracy, okay? And you can't ever reach the ideal. Instead, you can always just continue to approximate it, but we're always searching for the ideal, right? Aristotle, on the other hand, is focused on what you can see, what you can observe, touch, feel, hear, right? And that is what's true. Where we are with the Bachelor's Program in Education is that we build educators who don't just know what to do, okay? They know why they're doing it. So it is a balance between theory and practice that is very important to us. Why does this work? It works because we have robust and rigorous research-based coursework. We have partnerships with local ISDs that are giving our students incredible hands-on field experience. From there, we're preparing our students not just to unlock the gate of certification. We want them to have as gentle as possible of a first-year teaching. We know it's hard, but we want to perseverate through that, and we want them to be able to have long and fruitful careers in the classroom. In addition to that, we're working on six different articulation agreements for bachelors to masters or four-plus-one agreements. And because this curriculum is so rigorous, they're going to be prepared to be successful in their graduate coursework, so they can then ascend from the classroom to leadership roles within their communities. Just want to show you some of the things that we've been doing. So here's hands-on learning. We did a day of play in a child development class. We didn't play all day, I promise, President Farmer. We instead, we instead did engage with some of the learning tools. We understand that play is learning in childhood, so we played for about 10 minutes, and then we reflected on it. But this is just one example. We engage in service, so our students in the Bachelor's Program come and support the Jack Harvey event and many other things. From there, they also engage in scholarships. So this is a research symposium that we did not too long ago. And we hold the door open for the next group. So we welcome community high school students who are engaged in the education and teaching or education and training program study for their CTE sequence to come and be a coyote teacher for a day. So they come and they audit a class, they're right alongside our bachelor students, they do a tour of the campus, and then we welcome them in for an overview of our programming. So, all right. We're doing all of these things, and it is important to acknowledge that while it is beautiful that we are touching hearts, changing minds, impacting the future, we wouldn't have a program unless it offered some revenue. So I want to address some of the revenue projections. Now, I am an English literacy person by trade, so I teach big kids, I teach little kids to read, and that's typically my MO. But I have the math to object, and of course, just understand that these are estimates. But if we look just at tuition, it's around $2,000, right? And then we're looking at one graduate. What revenue can they bring to our college? So in terms of tuition, $7,500. For a bachelor's degree, according to the new funding model, is $4,500. I'm currently working on institutional credentials leading to licensing certain certification or occupational skills awards, and each one of those for a high-need area is worth $1,250. So by the time our graduates are done, they will earn five OSAs or ICLCs, okay? And then, of course, they'll have their certification. So one graduate throughout two years of matriculation with us will earn the college around $22,000. Looking at May 2026, we have 34 expected graduates over the course of Fall '25 and Spring '26. If we look at the income that it brings in, the revenue, that's how much theoretically the program is bringing to college. A near-term estimate is over $1 million, and then a long-term estimate, I, of course, want to graduate $500, $700. But let's start small and go with 100. So we're doubling exponentially. And this is important to point out. We are growing, and we are growing because we have an excellent education team, and we have a lot of strong adjuncts and dedicated community partners. But we are bringing students in, and we are successful for this reason. First of all, the numbers are conservative, so we'll step back from that reason. The numbers are conservative. It didn't include any of the institutional fees, no technology fees. And then, once we are approved to become an educator preparation program, we'll be able to confer alternative certification, and that's even more revenue for the college, okay? So I just wanted to point that out. Before I tell you, money is important, but impact is what brings in the revenue. So this is why we're successful, because we put people first. That's the coyote way. There is not a single instructor here who is not invested wholeheartedly in their student success. We relentlessly pursue their dreams, and we are here to equip them with the things that they need in order to be successful. We take not accountability, because that's about fault. It's your job versus mine. We take ownership, okay? We own it. It is ours. They're all our students. And so I wanted to point that out, too. This is why we're being successful, because we invest in relationships. From there, our students in the Bachelor's Program have incredible teacher origin stories. We have first-gen college students, students who are caregivers, parents, in-service paraprofessionals, and we have second-career seekers. They all come. Most people have a teacher origin story where they have some sort of epiphany, and they're all beautiful stories and very inspiring. And I'd love to be able to share all of them with you, but we have one in particular that we want to share with you today. This is Mary Tagle, and as President Farmer said, she is one of our shining stars in the Bachelor's Program and also in the state of Texas as a baccalaureate student. And so it is with that that I would like to welcome Mary Tagle to the stage. Thank you so much for your time, your attention, and support.
All right, Mary. Thank you. I, of course, had to wear my medal because I was super surprised when I did win. I didn't have a difficult story. And I even talked to Dr. Hancock. I said, um, well, this journey has been fun. And so I'm so thankful that they were inspired by my speech and inspired by my essay, and that I was one of their winners for the scholarship for CCPA. And it was a great experience at their conference with my team and my cheerleaders from Weatherford College. So yes, as you have shown me praise, I showed you Weatherford College praise as well. I received so many notifications that my friends and community members have seen pictures of me on their social media page. They're like, Mary, is this you? And I say, yes, that's me. I've taken the time to make sure that I'm there to support at the Jack Harvey Award Ceremony and Conference. And it was important to me that my, I also own or run a Girl Scouts troop. And for us, we like to truly have the Girl Scouts understand the power of community, that they mean something in the community regardless of their age. It is a multi-level troop, so the girls are from kinder to sixth grade. And so for the girls to be able to see me in the community, see my picture, see that I take the time to be a community member, to uplift our teachers, I feel that they see that I also, you know, am pushing and inspired to educate our youth. So I decided to take on this second journey in education. I did graduate from Hill College in 2008. I obtained my license in vocational nursing there. But through life and experience, 2020, I realized there was something more that I wanted to do. Let's just leave that. And it was my daughter. She came home and she said, I want to go to Girl Scouts. I want to join Girl Scouts. And I said, well, we'll look into it. I wasn't expecting a return call from the regional office who asked me if I would help open and co-lead the very first troop, so I said, absolutely, because who turned dumb Girl Scouts? And it was our second meeting that I realized that this could be huge. The girls didn't see each other's differences. They collaborated together. They worked together. We were doing shoelace tying. I glittered beads to those shoelaces and just having so much fun. But as I stood back, I thought, if I could do this in a classroom, the sense of community, the sense of belonging, the sense where an environment, we're learning and working together, hands in hand, goes together, hands in hand, this is, this could be huge. This could be, this could be big. I want to do this. So I went home and I told my husband, I want to go back to school, and he simply said, okay. He didn't ask. He said, okay. I got that green light, went to the computer, and there it was, Weatherford College. I love this roundabout, because in our roundabout, it's this way, is my workplace, and then this roundabout is Walmart. That's where we have to go. When we come into town, it's a 30-minute drive. So regardless, I felt like I could do this. I could be three places at once. I could be at work. I know, it's pretend. But perhaps I could make this happen. Perhaps that my time could be managed better, being that all things were right here. All things that I need, that are essential to my goals, are right here. And then I wouldn't be missed, and I would just tell them I was at Walmart for an hour. Maybe they would believe me. So, and that would be Weatherford College student advisor. So, and that would be Wadda for College student advisor. And he asked me, what kind of teacher do you want to be in? And I told him a good one. I realize what he was asking now. And he asked me, what grade do you want to teach in? And I told him, all of them. Yeah, that happened, too. But I realize now that that answer still stands because regardless of what grade my student transitions into, what school they transition into, where they lead onto, I want them to know that Mrs. Tagle's table is always available for them to consume all things learning. Oh, let's see. I got a little bit off track. So again, I praise Wadda for College. When I am in those student observation hours and teachers, paraprofessionals, they ask me, where are you? Where are you going? What are you doing? And they're a paraprofessional. I say, oh, my gosh, you could do this so much easier. You don't, you've already got your foot in the door. You can do this all online. And I always hope to empower them to come to Wadda for College and seek further growth in their education. And I always am trying to push. And I ensure that, and my hope is that when I open my door to my very first classroom, that they see that if I can do it, they can do it, too. And then I tell them, I was like, and I'm going through the program, so I am here to help you and teach you and get you through this process as I've done. So thank you for allowing me to be here. And thank you for allowing me to share my story. But most of all, I praise the, um, the program that has allowed this journey to not be a bumpy road. Because I've kind of told my, my children, I was like, if you want something you like, you have to work for it. I might have been wrong about that because it hasn't been work and it's been absolutely fun. And for a very first time in my life, I had an instructor saying, here is our schedule for next semester. Let me know if this is going to work for you. I was absolutely frozen. It was Dr. Hancock that did this. And I said, she's allowing us to pick our schedule? Like, what's going to work for me? Well, I mean, I've always thought in my mind that if you want something, you have to get it. She's making it accessible. She's making it meaningful. She's making it so that I can make this transition from school to the workforce fun. So I appreciate everything that you guys do, everything that the program means to me, and happy to be here today.
Congratulations, Mary. That's about as cool as it gets, really does.
I would comment, could you come and talk to my grandson? He'd be missing some.
I think what you're writing is far.
Do you belong to any professional teachers organizations?
Do I belong to any professional teachers organizations?
Teachers, so.
I do not.
I would encourage you to do that because part of, part of your profession is your responsibility to help other teachers and to wake up, uh, wake up Texas. Because Texas right now is pretty close to the bottom of the most shameful states in this union in terms of supporting its children. And, uh, we need all the professionals that teach to get involved in it because it's not going to happen as long as it's, that does not, there's not any pressure like that on the state. It'll get, it'll get away with letting Texas be at the bottom of all states as long as there's no pressure to change. So I just encourage you to join professional organizations.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
It was really cool to listen to you, it really was. We're down to item number eight. Mr. Baker, do you have some announcements for us?
I sure do, sir. Several upcoming events to tell you about. President Farmer mentioned our softball team. There's a doubleheader this Saturday. And of course, both of those teams, baseball and softball, will continue to play next week. However, next week is spring break here. Several fine arts events coming up, like the Songwriters Showcase, March the 25th. It's All About the Music is a program that Duane Direct puts on in this room, April the 3rd. The WC Jazz Orchestra, a tribute to jazz composers, as well as a theater production of The Thirty-Nine Steps in April. So you can check those out. Our alumni awards luncheon will be in this room on March the 28th. And then, as well as Taste of Parker County. Taste of Parker County, as you know, is our annual foundation food tasting event. It's held at Heritage Park, and that will be April the 15th. And board members, if you're interested in going, please contact Molly or ask President Farmer to get you some tickets. We'd love to have you out there that day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brent. Appreciate you. We're down to item number nine on the push agenda where we will go into closed session for real property matters and employee matters as well. And the time now is 1:03. And we will be in recess for those purposes.
We've had some bites.
The time now, by my timepiece, is 2:20 in the afternoon. Again, it's March the 13th, 2025. We've returned from closed session for today's meeting and we're down to item number 10, consideration and possible action on real property matters. We do not have any action items related to real property.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Dowd was going to make a motion.
That's right. I forgot.
Do that one.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College ratify the purchase of 1403 Sloan Street at the price of $190,000 plus closing costs.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, please. It's unanimous. Thank you for catching that. I believe that's the only real property item that we had on today's agenda. We're now down to item number 11, the consideration and possible action with regard to appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, dismissal or dismissal of a public officer or employee. And we, under the subitem is A, annual evaluation and fulfillment contract of the college president. And after due consideration, I think we have a motion to be presented by the vice chairman, Mr. Dowd.
Yes, sir. As it relates to Dr. Farmer's existing contract, I make a motion to increase Dr. Farmer's base salary by 8%, allow business and personal use of the college-owned Chevrolet Tahoe, and also authorize a one-time retention bonus of $25,000. Also move to extend his existing contract by one year to expire on March 15th, 2028.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, so that motion is approved and passed. Final item is the adjournment. We have a motion.
I saw.
And second?
Second.
All in favor. We are adjourned.